Thank you. I'd like to call the State's meeting of Council to order. Council, ask for it. Give it your hand.
Yes, Mayor, with your indulgence and with the dogs of council, I'll remove my mask. And I would like to take the opportunity to pay tribute to our late Himalaya Daniel Adams. Just a little background, I have known Daniel Adams for many, many years. Did a lot of work with her around the Thompson Labor Committee, the daycare. She worked at Nikki Ashton's office for a number of years. Certainly, I was very involved with the election that sent Danielle Adams to the legislature. She was very involved in mental health and disabilities society as well in Thompson. She had a real passion for the daycare and I shared a story with the Free Press this week where Danielle, as most you know in Thompson, she sat on the board for about 10 years with Thompson Children's World. And when I was president of the union, she would come and we'd have a concern with the day because we were ready to them. She had a way of listening to you. And then she said, but the daycare needs a fridge or stove. So I go back to the example, we get the fridge or stove. That was Danielle Adams. I remember after she was elected, it wasn't long before she came to meet with city council and listened very diligently. And in fact, I took one of my many books that I keep on since I'm on council. And I remember last year, and so were you that was present, when we actually met with Danielle Adams and walked noon. And we talked about the issues of Northern Manitoba, not just Thompson, whether it be the money reserve fund, living wage, affordable housing, vaccine, and the issues went on. I will tell you this, Mayor Smoot, that I've attended the O M of Danielle Adams at least twice in the last few days. And it's been, it's been awkward. She's left behind two children and a husband. And let me tell you, Mayor, that she is really appreciative what you have done for that family. Our family is really appreciated what you've done. You've showed up when you need to show up. And again, when I met with her husband, Bill, today, they were so appreciative of this community. The community has been outpouring to that family. And so I want to ask this council to continue to keep them in your prayers. If you pray, there's a long road ahead for Bill and his children and his family. And Mayor Smoot, at this time, I would certainly, if you have words, absolutely. If not, we should rise from a moment of silence. Thank you, council and mayor.
Oh, thank you, Les. I, yes, I have been involved since the accident happened. And it is definitely a tragedy for our whole North. Danielle Adams, in two short years, she accomplished a lot in the North. She listened to a lot of people. I actually, my statement was to the Free Press that imagine in two years, if she'd actually become a seasoned politician, just the work that she could have done and worked with us all in the North. And she was respectful of everybody. And as you can see, just by the pouring from the legislature right down to, up to Prime Minister Trudeau, she's had an impact on a lot of people. So yes, Les, I would agree, we will now have a moment of silence for Danielle Adams. Thank you. Thank you for all the correspondence, phone calls that I've had from around the country, from around the province, just supporting our city in general on the loss of Danielle Adams. It's been a great open, so thank you very much. And as Danielle would say, let's get on with business. I would like to start by recognizing that we're on the traditional land of Mitchell's relationship prenation and that we are on the homeland of the Maytee. Thank you very much. I am asking for an approval of an amended agenda. Seven point one four is going to be removed for this evening. So I'd like an approval of the agenda as amended. Council elsewhere, Council landmark, all those in favor? Carrie. Next, we're going to go to community feedback. Any comments, questions?
Ron Mountain, 20 Ash Street. On November the third, I sat in this gallery and watched the appointments of many committee chairs amongst your counselors. And as of yet, there has not been any meetings. As a matter of fact, the last meeting held of any committee was the 25th of, oh, yeah, walkover. Now I was wondering, why is that?
Yeah, council is currently reviewing its organization by law. And as such, in the interim, has been meeting as a whole.
Okay, has there been other committees meeting such as the G I L and the Quodic Center?
The Quodic Center is a community led committee, so it meets on its own. Though it does have a council liaison, the G I L committee is continuing to meet and has been updating council and camera on its progress.
So has any decision been made? Will there be a call for citizen reps for committees?
I'll get my direction on that from council once they come to the decision on the organizational bylaw.
So the council is probably haven't made a decision.
No, what I'm saying is council is reviewing their bylaw. And once the direction is provided, then the council, we would move forward with whatever direction they provide. So council, in the course of their term, they can look at their, they have to look at the organizational bylaw once. That's a requirement under the municipal act. But anytime they can review their organizational bylaw and make changes.
Just a reminder, there's only 10 months left. If you put a call out for in the last two months of your term, odds are you're going to get your usual response. Nobody's going to be interested.
Any other maybe comments, feedback?
I'd like to privilege my mayor. If I may, a point of privilege is allowed when you need to clarify an item. It's just been indicated, I think, that the city administration indicated that we were meeting as a whole. I think it's important that, in the interest of clarity, to indicate that we haven't met on committee issues that I'm aware of as a whole. I'll be good at that.
Thank you. Anything further that I do agree, we have not met on committee issues. Thank you. Sorry. Is the adoption minutes, six point one is the regular meeting of council, November the 29th, 2021. Resolution two zero two one, one seven zero, moved by council fountain, second by council landmark. It resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, November the 29th, 2021. He adopted a circuit administration.
Anything further?
Anything? Council? All the question, for the question, all those in favor? I should mention, tonight, we have counselor Prue on Zoom and counselor Valentino has sent requests. Thank you.
I've resolved it. You're going to have to let us know how we vote, Catherine.
Okay.
Next, all sections.
Number seven is resolutions. Seven point one is a resolution approving administration to enter into a contribution agreement with the government of Manitoba for investing in Canada infrastructure program for the water and wastewater main renewal. Resolution two zero two one, one seven one, moved by council fountain, seconded by council wall. Whereas Canada and Manitoba have entered into integrated bilateral agreements for investing in Canada infrastructure to support sustainable and inclusive communities while driving economic growth. And whereas the program has included five streams, public transit, green infrastructure, community culture, and recreation infrastructure, rural and northern community infrastructure, and COVID-19 resilience infrastructure. And whereas the city of Thompson has applied for financial assistance under the program to carry out the project. It resolved that council authorized administration to enter into contribution agreement between the government of Manitoba and the city of Thompson for the water wastewater main renewal project number G I S E Q one oh six nine. Administration?
Just mentioned, under the I C I P Investment Canada Infrastructure Program, the city submitted five separate submissions. These are the two that we heard back on and have been successful in garnering funds. One, the water wastewater made renewal, and then one to come later tonight is a road renewal. We are advised that we are successful on these, but this is finally the agreements have arrived and need to be signed. So it's a little bit of a housekeeping matter, but to be able to start the work, we have to sign these agreements. The province has already filled their funds. And the way the Canada's funds work is those are reimbursement after the work is done.
Thank you. Questions, turn? Counselor number?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there certainly, there's not a, something that has come lately. We applied for those grants. It's a lot of money over a number of years for the city of Thompson to improve its infrastructure. And certainly, like any money, there has to be agreement in place so we can work together. And I'm certainly in support of that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Landmark, sorry, I told you, council.
Over extended, much better. I just want to say, yeah, like council always said, this is unbelievable, great news story for us. It's a reward in sewer lines updated. It's going to cost us, but it's one of the causes one of our, because we, our administration and our council, the G I L and our administration, and did a great job finding and putting together a great case, great business case to get us this and to save our taxpayers on making these big infrastructure changes. Thank you very much. Definitely be supportive.
Thank you, Master Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, it's a good news to get some money from others' level of government. But the couple of concern I have, which is doesn't mean that I'm not going to support this. I just want to point it out, the concern that I have, which is the last project that we did on the Stagron, it set the price for so high, so I don't know how much this money can do for the city in the future. Because the price was set to let the people from south to come up here to charge us the price that they already did it before. Another concern I have is engineering. It's almost a million dollars just for the design for the eight million dollar job. So with the money that we getting, we talking about at least a few million dollars just going towards to the engineer design. That's very costly, which is, it is not to say it's not a good money to spend. It's just like to me, a big chunk of the money that we can do more go to us through the design. I don't know what else. They need to study that much because of the road, of the water and sewer. I don't know much about it, but just look at the number, it just kind of like, I don't like the number that they're charging for that. So with that, I guess overall, I think it's okay. I think, I think it's acceptable, but other than that, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Another thing that has to be noted with these brands, a lot of time the brands, it's 33%, 33 and 33 that the city has to come up with. Municipal, and in this, in this case, it was a lot less money. I believe it's around 12% Anthony, if I'm sure.
For the water wastewater renewal, Manitoba was contributing 15.6 million. Canada's contributing 18.8 million. And the city will have to contribute 13.6 million.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Paul?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, like my fellow counselors, pleased to get this contribution from the province of Manitoba. Anyone who's had a water break or issues with their rules certainly will appreciate this, which is probably almost all of us. Looking forward to this investment in the city of Thompson. It seems it's one of the biggest investments in our community in its history. So it's up to us now to manage that properly and ensure that that happens and most as efficiently as possible. And so I hope that it goes very well. I would also like to extend kudos to the administration, not just to our committee Gil, but to everyone at the administration that's made this happen. With Mr. Gil leaving, someone had to carry the torch, so kudos to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Does Andre have his hand up or anything? You guys will keep me appraised, okay? All right, call for the question, all those in favor? Carrie? Carrie? Next, the seven point two, resolution authorizing administration into entering into a cost sharing agreement with Manitoba Water Services Board for the water and sewer renewal, I said phase one. Resolution two zero two one, one seven two, moved by Council McMyrtle, seconded by Council. Oh, sorry. Whereas on October 18th, 2021, council passed resolution number two zero two one, one four zero, approving entering into the project management service agreement with the Manitoba Water and Services Board for the water and wastewater main renewal. And whereas the city of Thompson is in receipt of a cost sharing agreement from the Manitoba Water Services Board for the water and wastewater renewal, I said phase one. Now therefore be it resolved that council authorized administration to enter into the cost sharing agreement agreement with Manitoba Water Services Board for the water and sewer renewable, renewal, I said phase one, administration.
This is the second step towards having Water Services Board deliver the project. They'll be delivering them at least for this first year and one, one year at a time. And then any decisions we make moving forward on multi-year projects. Now, this year would be a total project cost of $8 million, which the Water Service Board would oversee delivery into our community.
Counselor McMyrtle, you were the mover, did you want?
Not a lot, just to echo some of the comments, the thanks to administration and look forward to this project unfolding efficiently, successfully. None of yours comes.
Thank you, any other customer? Saying none, call for the question, all those in favor? Counselor Prue?
Yes.
Carrie? Seven point three is the resolution authorizing administration to enter into contribution agreement with the government of Manitoba for road renewal. Resolution two zero two one, one seven three, moved by Council Fountain, seconded by Council Wall. Whereas Canada and Manitoba have entered into integrated bilateral agreement for investing in Canada infrastructure to support sustainable and inclusive communities while driving economic growth. And whereas the program has included five streams, public transit, green infrastructure, community culture, and recreation infrastructure, rural and northern infrastructure, and COVID-19 resilient infrastructure. And whereas the city of Thompson has applied for financial assistance under the program to carry out the project. Now therefore be it resolved that council authorized administration to enter into a contribution agreement between the government of Manitoba and the city of Thompson for road renewal project number R N I S S, R N 1027, administration?
Yeah, similar to the previous one with the water, this is now for the roads. Again, the province of Manitoba has flowed their $13 million to the city, which is held in trust. Canada will make their contribution after the fact as a payback once the funds are expended. The total cost of this project is $40 billion. And again, that is more of a housekeeping to get the agreement signed so we can start, start the work.
Thank you, Counselor Paul?
I'll just note before that Counselor Valentino is during the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Valentino, welcome. Counselor Paul, you want to?
No, no, no further comments than what I made already.
Any other comments? Saying none, call for the question, all those in favor?
Prue and Kathy are in there.
Thank you, Carrie.
Wait, the privilege, Madam Mayor, just to be fair and no, no intended shadow or shade thrown at Mr. Communication Director's way, but can we have the counselors actually call out, I, if they're in support, as opposed to having Casper tell us?
Thank you.
That we all counselors here.
Kathy and Andre, can you please speak up when you're in favor or opposed to a resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
That'll take off the phone?
Yeah, just because the TVs aren't working.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate bringing that to my attention, but I don't see the TV. Seven point four, contribution agreement, government of Manitoba, a resolution authorizing administration to enter into a vaccine clinic agreement between the government of Manitoba and the city of Thompson. Resolution two zero two one, one seven four, moved by Council McMyrtle, seconded by Deputy Mayor Landmark. It resolved that council authorized administration to enter into the vaccine clinic agreement between the government of Manitoba and the city of Thompson, administration?
Yes, this is a bit of a strange one. In the early days of COVID and setting up the clinics, the rush was to get it set up as quick as possible. With the understanding that we'd entered into the agreements, kind of during the process or after the fact. Once the clinic was set up and up and running, the agreement was then kind of put on the backburners. It wasn't actually signed. The province has been making its payments. The city's been providing its services in return. Now we're in receipt of a letter saying that basically the clinic is closing. But we realize for auditing the housekeeping purposes, we do need to have a signed agreement on the, on the books. So like I said, all the payments have been made to date. I believe there's a few outstanding bills for the month of December that were just sent to them on Thursday or Friday, which we anticipate. Council had asked me a question about insurance. The province is self insured, but there's a clause under section five, I believe, that discusses that the province self insures and then pays and fixes if anything's damaging the clinic.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McMyrtle, you have any comment?
Yeah, just briefly, I think it was, it was wise and good of administration in the mayor's office to ensure that the clinic was held in a city owned building and translated to revenue for the city of Thompson. Especially with the restrictions we've been living under, that gymnasium would have been empty for the majority of the time that clinic's been up and running anyways. So nothing more to add there, thanks.
Thank you, any further comments, Counselor Earl?
Would the mayor, would the mayor of it probably know where the clinic is moving, please?
Yes, it has moved to the building beside your office, drugstore.
Thank you.
Counselor Paul?
Yeah, I'd like to call for a recorded vote, honor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? As requested by Counselor Paul, this will be reported vote. All those in favor of this resolution? Counselor Colborne, Counselor McMyrtle, Counselor also, Mayor Smoot, Counselor Wong.
Hi, Andre.
Counselor Valentino.
Valentino, opposed, Counselor Paul, Carrie, thank you. Seven point five is the resolution to approve the calculation of prices for the lease of four multifunction laser printers. Resolution two zero two one, one seven five, moved by Council Fountain, seconded by Council Ellsworth. It resolved that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the proposal to each four multifunction laser printers to Wilson's Business Solutions for the total cost of $71,974.89, all taxes included, based on a 48 month lease as per tender file number one 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 two one. Administration?
Yes, this is just an item, a bit of an internal business item. A number of our current ones are off lease and have not been working and requiring repeated and extensive servicing. So they've put out for the tenders for replacements for the next few years to make our business processes more efficient.
Thank you, Counselor Paul?
I don't, I certainly support this. Knowing you, but your last couple of weeks, I'm sure you would as well.
Any other question? Call for the question, all those in favor? Counselor Valentino, Counselor Prue?
Probably, yeah.
Kathy Valentino is on mute.
I, sorry.
Thank you. Seven point six is a resolution to approve 2022 provisional estimates. Resolution two zero two one, one seventy six, moved by Council McMyrtle and seconded by Council Ellsworth. Whereas in accordance with one, section 163 of the municipal act, the council of the city of Thompson has made provisional estimates of all operating and capital expenditures of the municipality for period from January 2022 until the adoption of the annual estimates. Now therefore be it resolved that the following provisional estimates, we hereby adopted operating requirements. General Government Services, $1,050,000, Protective Services, $4,550,000, Transportation Services, $1,650,000, Environmental Health, $630,000, Public Health and Welfare, $110,000, Environment, Environmental Development, $5,000, Economic Development, $125,000, Recreation and Culture Project, $1,170,000, Fiscal Services, $100,000, Capital, $6 million, Utility Expenders, expenditures, $6 million. Total, $21,390,000, administration?
Yeah, so this is a bit of a housekeeping that comes before council every year. It allows council to pass an operating for the administration for the first five months of the year until council drafts its 2022 financial plan. We've done some checking with the municipal services officers to see how this should be delivered, if it's month to month or in five 12s, and we advise to proceed with the five 12s.
Thank you. Master McMyrtle?
Yeah, I'll be supporting and just to echo Anthony's sentiments there, there was a suggestion of, is there an alternative way to vote? And I then followed up and we've received the answer that this is the way to proceed, so I'll be in support.
Thank you, Counselor Ellsworth?
Let's be clear, I'm not against the, putting the money forward because we need to do that. But for anyone that's interested in knowing, when I read this wording from the municipal service, I've never seen anyone like it. Let me, let me just read, if you would indulge me, just a couple of words. We would suggest, I've negotiated many, many contracts involved with the law. It's either shell or well. So I'm probably more confused than I've ever been when it comes to that letter. I will respect the will of the council, but to me, if I had gotten that letter, I would have went back and said, and I've read it all. That does not provide blah, blah, blah. But when you start off with, we would suggest, that's confusing for me. It's not direct. It's not directed. And so that becomes an issue, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Wong.
You may, Madam Mayor. I will make a a comment, I have no intent to throw anybody under the bus, but this is the fact I need the public know. So right now, we don't have any budget meetings too today, to me, as elected official, I'm not comfortable to give them the twenty one million dollars of provisional budget for them to spend for five months. Again, Councilor Ellsworth, you're not wrong. I brought the the municipal ad with me right now for section one sixty three. This is what is written on the one sixty three. The council may adopt an interim operation budget to have effect only until the council adopts the operation budget for the fiscal year. So it did not say it's a five twelve or two twelve or ten twelve, it's just a suggestion, it's a practice. To me, I'm not elected to be here to rubber stamping, I've been done there for so many years, so right now I think it's time to look at the budgets, so that's why I suggest every month, the administrations have come to the table to us and ask what do we need to spend for this month or following month? Otherwise, I think it's our range for twenty one million dollars, just a sign of blank check without knowing what are we getting into. And another point would have pointed out, for the last seven years, I never seen twenty one million dollars for five months, that is outrageous. To me, it's a lot of money that we need to give permission to spend without knowing what are we getting into it. So with that reason, I like for recordable and also for now, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with the, it is a large amount of money, but on the opposite side of that coin, that's investment in capital, which is our infrastructure, which is kind of positive for the city of Thompson, so that's just all I want to say.
Councilwoman.
I want to support this because needed, but I gotta say, follow up with what Council wants it, there has been no meetings, budget meetings at all, no meetings, not even no finance meeting. And here we are presented with a twenty one million dollar bill. I know we're going to spend, if we go there for five months, that gives us over a fifty million dollar budget. We haven't even decided that yet. Right, so I'll support it for this time. And but I think we should start having our finance meetings so that we can discuss this more, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, when we started this meeting, there was a question from the the gallery in terms of whether we had met or not, and I think it's fairly clear that we're not meeting in the council, it shouldn't be a a secret at this point, that there we're going through a bit of a restructuring. I remind the rest of council that you have a fiduciary obligation to ensure that money is spent the way it's supposed to be in the interest of taxpayers. Given that we don't have regular readings with the administration as we did in the past. I can't support this and I hope that other councils recognize their fiduciary responsibility and do the same, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Member.
One of the things I wanted to take notice of, we're not signing blank checks, we're giving our administration the funds they need to run the city for the first of all, and a big chunk of this funding is when we go into contracts which we just signed, I guess, we haven't signed yet, but we've agreed to the agreements with ISAP. That's a big chunk of change, the twelve million dollars of that twenty, that we have to have available signings, you can't have other things without having the money. Um, so that reduces it down to almost eight, nine million, right? And I'm not suggesting that we're signing anything blank. Our administration provided the places where those funds are going to be, another big chunk of that is four point five million for protective services, we know our RCMP costs in the city are pretty crazy, because we have so many RCMP. And this is just to keep, keep us going and suggest that our administration is going to do something, something different than we've got time and we will start our reading, I hope, shortly. Really, we can get all those stuff. And I'll be supporting this, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Councilor Valentino, has her hand up?
Okay, Councilor Valentino.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smook, yeah, I'll be definitely supporting this, I think it is our our due diligence as counselors to do the fiduciary responsibility as Council Fountain said. And this is part of doing this, this is a regular housekeeping thing, I've brought brought this up also at AMM. There's a practice across municipalities across the province to ensure the municipalities have the ability to operate starting January first. Our council sees our check registries every month, and we also see every twelve weeks the the budget for each department and what percent they have expended expenditures to and income brought in. So I will definitely be supporting this as it's so important, especially with the funding opportunity for the ISAP projects that we just recently passed resolutions for, thank you, Mayor Smook.
Councilor Ellsworth.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, let's be very clear, I don't think counselors are opposed to the provisional estimates, we didn't get clear direction from our municipal officers, in my opinion, and the issue is not about the provisional estimates, let's be very clear, it's about giving five months of a budget to our administration, whether any discussion whatsoever into any committee meeting or anywhere else, and I sit here tonight and saying I'm willing to allow twenty one million dollars without even looking at it, and yes, we do get the register after, but the money is spent after, when we direct that money is always spent. These funds are gone, we don't get a say later, I don't think you should pay this, or we don't think you should pay that, that's that's done. So 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 the real issue here is, and please help me to understand this, we didn't get clear direction according to that memo. And it's not about the provisional estimates, it's about five months with a total of twenty one million dollars. Uttered it rather than what Counselor Wong pointed very clearly, we'll give them the money, but we just need to see each month what has been requested so we can look at it. And I think that is our responsibility.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, just expanding on what the Council Ellsworth has said. This council did try to have the administration report on a monthly basis, they probably still will, but I wanted that formalized. Especially given that we haven't met regularly and the public knows that and sees that. This is not a regular budget, we've done this in the past. And the amount's been significantly less, the reason why it's so high for the public, in case they're wondering, is because the ISAP grants in there, I assume. And so is it a very elevated from what we're dealing with before? I stand by my comments earlier, it's really great to get that funding from the province and from other governments when it comes to uh, funding infrastructure in the community, but at this level, at this amount of money, it's important on both the administration and council to follow that very carefully. Uh, I'm I'm worried that the like many other projects I've seen in this community in the past, I'm not pointing at the fit, fingers at the city, but a number of organizations. Unless you're very careful about how you're spending that money, there's a tendency for it to just fly out of your hands before you know it. Uh, so again, I can't support that, given the situation that we're in currently, clearly the public can see we're having issues and we're not meeting, so I can't support it in that regard. I, like Council Ellsworth, would very much support this if we had formalized monthly resolutions on this, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Saying that?
Oh, sorry, Kathy Valentino has her hand up.
Okay, Councilor Valentino.
Thank you, Mayor Smook, just to follow up on a few comments, the five months is just gets you to the date where financial plans have to be presented to the province, that's their date. This obviously would be end earlier if we were to able to get our financial plan before the five months is done, so this just gives the administration the opportunity to keep the city operating until we do get our financial plan, to the comments of us not meeting. We still are meeting in camera as a council, so it's important for the public to be aware of that also, thank you, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. I mean, uh, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I think the real question is not about concern about five months ahead or five months later. My my concern is about accountability, we are the elected official, we have absolutely right to look into every penny that city spent, I don't care how you guys put it, or how you guys want to insinuate the 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 comment or this and that, but to me, if I'm not meeting with the administration or any entity, control entity about asking money, I'm not comfortable to give any amount out until I see the number and the request and the reasonable. Then I'm okay, otherwise, I think we keep on talking about a five month budget. No, we're not worried about that, we're not talking about that, we're talking about the accountability. So at least I know what exactly what I'm allowed by elected by the public to say, go ahead spend or not spend it. Anyway, I realized my recorded vote, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just want to make one point that I think is lost. Mayor Smook, we have not met as a finance committee since October. This would have been brought forward to a finance committee for us to have a look at. When, when, when some council say, well, we were meeting, yes, we've been meeting, but we haven't met on committee work, haven't done that. That would be false to say that. And so that is the concern that the elected body, but the taxpayers of Thompson has not had the opportunity to go through this, we yes, we do it every year, because nobody in council would say we don't. Because it worked all those years, it doesn't mean say it works today, and I think the biggest opposition you've gotten, let's put it on the table, is that we never got a chance to sit down and discuss it, what's involved in that five months, what is it? And that's why you've got your debate at the chamber, at the 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 city of Thompson Chamber tonight, because that work normally would have been done. And I think maybe you would have had an unanimous decision to pass, I don't know that, but you might have, you certainly would have, I would have had a better understanding. But you throw twenty one million dollars on the table and say, I expect you to to support that for the five months until we get council is not stupid, we've been there three years, we've understands the rules of this game. The problem is, we haven't met, we haven't been given an opportunity to be. And therefore, I want not support doing it for five months, and I will respect those that do, I will. But if it had have been for monthly, because we didn't meet, that's a different story.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Deputy Mayor.
Administration did give us through a swivel, and I know we haven't met formally, I read it, I'm sure others have. And this is an interim thing. We will still meet on the budget, and I'll be supportive.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'll call for the question, and the recorded vote as per Council Wong, all those in favor? Councilor Colburn, Councilor McMurdo, Deputy Mayor Lunnar, Mayor Smook.
Hi. Andre.
Kathy Valentino.
For Valentino, opposed. Councilor Fountain, Councilor Wong, and Councilor Ellsworth, Carrie, thank you. Seven point seven is a resolution authorizing administration to enter into the contribution agreements with the controlled entities. Not so. I wouldn't argue that I have. Resolution two zero two one one seven seven, moved by Council Fountain, seconded by Council McMurdo. It resolved that council authorized administration to enter into provisional constitutional contribution agreements with the following controlled entities for twenty twenty two, the Thompson Public Library and the Thompson Recycling Center, administration.
Now, we normally bring these forward every year to allow these two organizations to continue well running. In the new year, they normally come and meet with council as part of the budget process, and council will allocate the funding. So the payment style that council would be going forward would be based on twenty twenty one numbers. You know, when council passes their financial plan, the administration would adjust the twenty two, twenty twenty two numbers to make sure that the numbers balance out at the end of the year.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll support this and it's it's may seem a bit contrary to my last vote, but the difference here is that if you wanted to know where the recycling center or the public library was spending their money, you could go see that publicly. It has been said that we've met in camera, though they're not public discussions. I, the amount also is the same as last year, and I know what that organization is doing, I'll support this, both of them, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to ask for a recordable, secondly, the only, the concern I have is like, we have several control entity, but we only do that for two. So, again, I would bring that up again. We haven't met with them, the normal process is they come to the, to chamber and present their case every time. Tell us what they need the money for, item by item. But this year, we haven't met, and I don't feel comfortable enough to give out any amount without knowing what they actually need. So that is a trouble to me all the time, and I look at this kind of uh, transaction without knowing what I'm giving out or giving agree on or authorize on. So with that, I will not support this kind of agreement until we met, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mayor Smook, could you, could you read the resolution again, I'm a little confused with the agenda, I think you said provisional, is that correct?
I did, it was requested in camera that we add that word.
So so because of that word, I will support it, because we did ask, and I want to make clarification, is that they do come through the budget process, they don't come through the officials, is that correct? That's correct.
They will come to council as part of your budget meetings.
I just wanted to clarify, because I wasn't sure about missing something.
And then the administration will adjust the numbers based on what your decision is.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any others? Seeing none, as per Duncan's request, we will do a recorded vote for this resolution, all those in favor? Councilor Colburn, Councilor McMurdo, Councilor Ellsworth, Deputy Mayor Lunnar, Mayor Smook, Councilor Fountain.
Kathy Valentino.
Councilor Valentino, Councilor through, opposed. Councilor Wong, Carrie, thank you. Seven point eight is a resolution to approve the sale of land agreement for Mike Rockenreger. Resolution two zero two one one seven eight, moved by Council McMurdo, seconded by Council Wong. Whereas the city is in receipt of a land sale agreement from Mister Mike Rockenreger for lot block five, plan five, four, five, two, field, field, north division. Whereas the Development Review Committee has reviewed the land sale agreement and is agreement with the condition set out there, now therefore be it resolved that council approved the land sale agreement for lot twenty four, lot five, plan six, four, five, two, field, field, north division, at a cost of ten thousand dollars plus GST, administration.
So the proponent approached the city looking to purchase the lot that was next to them. Uh, it appears that over about twenty or thirty years, a half of the lot adjacent was developed as part of their property was actually encroaching on city property. There was a lot surveyed on that location, but that lot was never sold or developed. So the approach is made to the, to the Development Review Committee, the committee reviewed the proposal and came to a recommendation that it be sold to the proponent for ten thousand dollars, but with the understanding that the lot must be consolidated and that it cannot be future subdivided, so there'd be a caveat paid placed on the land, so that it couldn't then be divided up and resold.
Thank you, um, Councilor McMurdo is the mover?
Yeah, the the land agreement place lays everything out there clearly, and this is a situation that rectifies an existing situation and brings in some revenue for the city that I am, I'm supportive, thanks.
Thank you, other conference, Councilor Colburn.
Uh, well, my problem with this, not the lands or nothing.
When was this reviewed by Development Committee?
I'll have to pull the minutes, but I believe it was at the August meeting of the Development Review.
Okay. I'll support this, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Fountain?
Madam Mayor, so basically what's, let me ask a couple of questions of administration for, maybe a bit unfair. Mr. McKenna's task here is question. So maybe before your time with the city, but my understanding, having grown up in that area, the lot sale prices were significant more than ten thousand.
I would have no information on the sales at that time.
The public knows, at least the public that bought those lots. Basically for the public, so they know this guy encroached on city property, a property that wasn't his and did that for a number of years with no penalty. And now is getting a property cheaper than, in my opinion, again, it's just my opinion. Cheaper than what would be going right that everyone else paid for, for their properties. This did come by Development Review. I sat on that board. Felt it was important that it come to council for a decision. So it's here. I don't support it. I don't think, I don't think other people would necessarily have the same. I'm coming through council, but I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to ask a question to you, Madam Mayor. When we are doing this kind of land sales agreement, who, who had the authority to make a decision?
It was a recommendation that we talked about at Development Review.
Is it the council rule to do that?
All decisions like this are council's decision.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the recommendation that's come out of Development Review. Ultimately, it's council's decision.
Okay. This is the problem I have. I want to point it out again. We never had that meeting for a long time. Also, we don't have a minute. I probably joined them quite regularly. I never seen this issue being bringing up. So all of a sudden, boom, on our table discussed tonight whether I agree with the price or not. I don't know. But we never had the discussion. So it's not fair to, to us as elected official to make that kind of decision without knowing all the detail. It's just based on a few wording here and it's hard for me to make a decision. So I, I will, I will decide when, when you call for the question. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ellsworth?
Madam Mayor, as, as you know, I, I probably attend ninety nine percent of the meetings that we've had, not that accounts. That, that discussion did take place at, at, at Development Review. And, and I mean, I've got to say it because of that. And for those of us that was there would have certainly engaged as council, regardless of the vote, we engaged in that conversation. We also debated it and at the end of the day, if nothing else, you have minutes you can read to, to clarify. I, I get the points that my fellow councillor Fountain raised, but at the same time, it's been many years that we've never gotten no money to my opinion. I don't think we have on that lot. It's only half cleared. In fact, if you read the minute or the notes, it's referred to half of the borough of Forest. That's what I read. So I've got to believe that there's probably no water, no electricity hooked up to that lot that most people get. I don't know that for sure. So, you know, you can, you can debate it all you like. We just leave it now and we go to the taxpayer and say, remove everything you've got and we can do that. We can do that as a council and say, you've got two thirty five. That's what you got. Or do we do what has been recommended at the, and, and take two thirty nine that was being used after that? Was being used for many, many years and say, listen, let's sell it. I know that the economy in Thompson has not been the best. I think we need to try to get more tax dollars into the city rather than raising taxes. This is another way. I do get the points, but beyond fairness, I understand that clearly. But that is one of the cases that's been never just came up today. I believe this has been brought up in the past as well. And it needs to be resolved and I respect again the wishes of my fellow councillors. Either way you go. But it certainly had a lot of discussion that I can remember in committee. So thank you.
Thank you. I am, I was just trying to sit here and remember because some of it couldn't have been in camera. So we have to be very careful what we say. Because I know we did discuss this more than once. We sent administration back to check the lot and found that it wasn't a premium lot, like you say, or there would be really a chance to develop on it. We did have the option that the tenant, the owner of two thirty five. There was the option of moving the things, but then that lot likely wasn't going to be sellable anyway. So it was a whole lot of things that came together to come to this decision. So that was just my remembers. I object. Councillor Fountain?
Kathy also has her hand up as. On this, on this issue. It is before the public now. So whether you have this discussion in camera or not makes no difference. Have this discussion now. The, this, this council has decided to go after derelict vehicles, property standards, all sorts of issues. We elected not to do that on this property. I don't know why that is. Say what you want. This was a lot. Period. And we allowed a guy to encroach on it without penalty and then purchase it for a cheaper amount, in my opinion. I could be wrong, but just based on memory, I believe lots are more expensive than that. So letting him do not stick down his landscaping and some of his development. I find that a little hard to swallow. No disrespect to Mr. Rockenweger. It's the city's responsibility to follow up on these things and their force where enforcement's due. And I don't think we did our, our due diligence here. And I, again, I won't be supporting this, but I, I really think that if we are going to come down on other properties for property status, we, we have a lesson to learn from this one that we probably should have learned a long time ago.
Councillor Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. Yes, I'll be supporting this. I was at the discussions when this took place. It wasn't just dropped on us tonight. We were discussed to set Development Review. And thank you to Mr. Rockenweger, who's waited a considerable amount of months for us to get this on the table to vote on tonight. And it was also brought up, I believe, from him years ago. So it's similar to Councillor Ellsworth's comments. Yes, we haven't been getting anything on this piece of property and now we have the ability to. And now that we have a Director of Development Services, hopefully we can start to see situations or issues like this that have been kind of left behind in the past get cleared up. So we move forward, but I'll be supporting this as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Councillor Colburn?
Couple of quick questions if you don't mind, Your Honor. How much does a service lot go in that area right now? If I want to go buy a lot, how much would it cost? Service.
Anthony?
There is no set price. There's a line matrix. What we do is according to the matrix, the measurements of the land are done, determine the square footage. Then a number of other parameters that are in the matrix are evaluated and it's typically brought towards a committee to review. And that's the price that the matrix puts out. But then council does have the option to negotiate on a price. So Matrix will tell you a price, but then the people can counter offer or council can make a deal that's outside of that matrix. It's a suggested price that council uses for that.
You know, I don't know. There's a lot for sale on Wall Pay Record for thirty eight thousand dollars. The empty lot, there's a trailer on there that burned. This sign up to thirty, twenty to thirty eight thousand, I agree with. For that lot, and that lot needs getting, it's a big difference. Right, you know. I think if our Development Review is going to go in there and these kind of decisions, they should be think about the taxpayers next to that lot too, what they pay for a lot. Mr. Rockenweger, when he bought that lot, he's on, he probably only paid a thousand dollars back twenty, twenty five years ago. We know, I don't know. But ten thousand dollars, you know, I want to support, but it's not, to me, it's a little fishy here. So fishy. And I will still support. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd be pleased to have my name recorded on this vote. So I asked for a recorded vote. Second, I'll ask administration is aware of a matrix and they had a ballpark number. When I asked for the number, if they had they would have devolved, I guess obviously that that number isn't available today. I do have major objections to this. I want to add because I didn't add it to my comments earlier. Not only is Mr. Rockenweger getting, in my opinion, again, this is solely my opinion, a deal on land that he should be paying penalties over. He's getting a deal with respective payment. He's getting to lay down in a lay, layaway program for his payments of the city of Thompson, which I believe this is generally what this is. So again, I'll be very pleased to put my name in opposition to this motion. Thank you. A resolution. All right.
Thank you. Any more comment? Seeing none, we'll call for the report. I read the, the vote recorded as per Councillor Fountain's request. All those in favor? Councillor Colburn, Councillor McMurdo, Councillor Ellsworth, Deputy Mayor Landmark, Mayor Smook.
Hi, Audrey.
Kathy.
Councillor Valentino, Councillor Prue, opposed. Councillor Fountain and Councillor Wong. It is carried. Thank you. Seven point nine is a resolution to appoint council representatives to controlled entities. Resolution two zero two one, one seven nine, moved by Councillor Fountain, seconded by Deputy Mayor of Landmark. It resolved that the members of council be appointed as council representatives to the following controlled entity. Thompson Library Board, Mayor Pauline Smook, Oriental Discovery Center, Thompson's Geological Site, Councillor Jeff Fountain, Thompson Recycling Center, Councillor Duncan Wong, Thompson Health and Society Agency, Councillor Braden McWhorter. Administration?
Nothing further.
Any comments or concerns from? Over the question. All those in favor?
Kathy.
Audrey.
Thank you. Carrie. Seven point ten is a resolution to appoint council representative to the Community Futures North Central Board. Two zero two one, one eight zero, moved by Councillor McMurdo, seconded by Councillor Fountain. It resolved that council appoint Les Ellsworth, primary and Deputy Mayor Landmark, alternate to the Community Futures North Central Board. Administration?
Nothing further.
Comments? Thank you very much, Councillor Ellsworth and Deputy Mayor Landmark. You will be, soon as we vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Kathy.
Carrie. Thank you, Councillor Ellsworth and Deputy Mayor Landmark for the Community Futures North Central Board. Seven point eleven. It's a resolution to appoint council representative to the Thompson Aboriginal Education Advisory Committee. Resolution two zero two one, one eight one, moved by Councillor Fountain, seconded by Councillor Colburn. It resolved that council approved, Councillor Andre Prue, primary and Councillor Kathy Valentino, alternate to the Thompson Aboriginal Education Authority Advisory Committee. Administration?
Nothing further.
Council comments? Over the question. All those in favor?
Kathy.
Audrey.
Very so. Thank you for proving Councillor Valentino. You are now on the Thompson Aboriginal Education Advisory Committee. It's a resolution to appoint council representative to the Valley Community Liaison Committee. Resolution two zero two one, one eight two, moved by Councillor Fountain, seconded by Deputy Mayor Landmark. It re, it resolved that council appoint Councillor Les Ellsworth, primary and Councillor Braden McMurdo is alternate to the Valley Liaison Committee. Administration?
Nothing further.
And Councillor Colburn?
To be consistent with my stance on anything to do with my employer here, I'd like to remove my motion to, to bring the resolution forward. Sorry, in, in the, the, the amount of resolutions up there certainly caused this problem. So I'd like to move, remove my motion. Allow someone else in the chair. In addition to that, Madam Mayor, also escaped from voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my apologies to council on that. I missed that.
Not a problem. Resolution again, and corrected or amended. Resolution two zero two one, one eight two, moved by Councillor Ellsworth, seconded by Deputy Mayor Landmark. It resolved that council appoint Councillor Les Ellsworth, primary and Councillor Braden McMurdo, alternate to the Valley Liaison Committee. Over the question and I would like to note that Councillor Fountain has recused himself from this vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Seven point one three, resolution to avoid upon council representative to the Thompson Urban Aboriginal Strategy Committee. Resolution two zero two one, one eight three, moved by Councillor Colburn, seconded by Councillor Fountain. It resolved that council appoint Councillor Andre Prue, primary and Councillor Jeff Fountain, alternate to the Thompson Urban Aboriginal Strategy Committee. Administration? Concerns, comments and concerns? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Hi.
Welcome to the Thompson Urban Aboriginal Strategy Committee, Andre and. Seven point four resolution as amended at the beginning is not on this agenda tonight. It's been removed from the agenda tonight. Seven point five is a resolution to approve the waiving of fees for the fur tables posted by the Manicover Tractors Association.
Kind of order, Madam Mayor. Were we not supposed to speak on that issue? Seven point one four?
No, I was understood that it was pulled for further information to come back to council. Am I wrong?
Council removed it.
We, we directed administration to get some more information for us.
Okay, thank you.
Seven point five, a resolution to approve the waiving of the fees for the fur tables posted by the Manicover Tractors Association. Resolution two zero two one, one eight five, moved by Councillor Ellsworth, seconded by Councillor McMurdo. Whereas the Manicover Tractors Association has requested the city of Thompson waive the fees associated with the rental of the Thompson Regional Community Center, K R C C for the twenty twenty one fur tables held December sixteenth and seventeenth, twenty twenty one. And whereas in twenty nineteen, council waived fifty percent of the fees associated with the rental, the K R C C and due to COVID nineteen, the fur tables did not take place in twenty twenty. Now therefore be it resolved that council waived fifty percent of the fees associated with the rentals of K R C C for twenty twenty one fur tables at a cost not to exceed four hundred and eighty dollars. I have mystery.
It's a similar resolutions come before council every year. This is a traditional event in the city of Thompson that council has shown strong support for in the past to keep this event in our community.
Hey, Councillor Over?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is something that's been taking place in Thompson, probably long before I've been there and I've been there for a long time. And I know yourself and myself and other councillors have attended when it's been held in, in other venues in Thompson. It's, it's a great. It's a great event. If the spend off of this event to the community of Thompson is huge, there's a lot of money spent in our community. There's a lot of people that comes to that. And I think that even putting it fifty percent. Yeah, I could certainly support that because the amount of money that will serve for the businesses alone will far away what we want to lose, if you actually lose. And I think we gain, we don't lose. So thank you for bringing this forward to the administration. I think it's a great thing and I'll certainly support it.
Thank you. Council Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want a clarification for this event this time. I heard it's not for public. Is that true?
That's true. I want to make that comment. Yeah.
Oh, okay. So. So.
Any other conference?
Kathy has a hand up.
Kathy, Council Valentin?
Thank you, Mayor Smoak. Yes, I'll definitely be supporting this. First off, it's fantastic that we have our facility back so we can start hosting events. Secondly, they will be following restricted amounts, so they'll need some help to have this up and running again this year as they're following COVID protocols. And the fact that, you know, this is the livelihood for a lot of our trappers and this didn't take place last year. So for sure, I'm going to be supporting this to help this, actually this industry as a whole. And it's a great event within our city of Thompson. So I'll be supporting it. It's great that it's back. Thank you.
Any other conference? Okay, yeah, this event is taking place this year. The only difference is they are, again, they will be lacking revenue because they are not going to be open to the public this year. The people that come in and sell their traditional goods and that will not be happening. This is an event that only the fur buyers and the trappers will actually be able to entertain. And again, Thompson will benefit from all those furs that are sold at our stores with all the goods that they get to carry them over to the next season and the Christmas shopping and that. So it's definitely a boon and I think that the least we can do is that fifty percent just to get them back into the economy and get them working. Yeah, so thank you. Nothing further. We'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Kathy.
Andre.
Thank you, Carrie. It's hard to believe that's happening this week already. Seven point six is a resolution to adopt the city of Thompson's twenty twenty two emergency plan. Resolution two zero two one, one eight six, moved by Council Ellsworth, seconded by Council McMyrtle. It resolved that Council adopt the city of Thompson's twenty twenty two emergency plan. Administration?
This is a housekeeping item that's required of the council to adopt the emergency plan yearly by resolution and forward that onto the province. Administrative team has reviewed the emergency plans and continually makes changes. So a number of changes have been made and as up to date as possible at this moment.
Thank you. Council Roswell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Smoak. I took the opportunity. There's a lot of work that goes into this. And I will point out that in past years since I've been on council, there was a number of items that needed to be updated. We caught those and this year when I went through with that, I got to be honest, I really didn't see anything on my part. I didn't take the time. And so thank you for those that put together the emergency plan. And something we need to do is not just the plan we submitted, but there's a plan that looks after Thompson. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other conferences? No, I too was very impressed when I was going over it this year. As Council Ellsworth mentioned, especially about three or four years ago, it hadn't been updated for a little bit. So it has taken a lot of work by our staff and the administration. And I really appreciate all the work gone into it. So we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Kathy.
Andre.
Carrie, thank you. Bylaw eight point one is the first reading. Two zero one six, dash two zero two one, the aquatic facility reserve by law. Resolution two zero two one, one eight seven, moved by Council Ellsworth, seconded by Council McMyrtle. It resolved that bylaw two zero one six, two zero two one, being a bylaw to establish a reserve fund for the purpose of capital expenditure related to the construction of an aquatic facility or significant upgrade, repairs, maintenance to an aquatic facility to be introduced and read for a first time. Administration?
This is the first reading of a bylaw to get it onto the books, so that council's second reading can have a debate on the potential for a new bylaw reserve specifically for aquatic facilities. One of the reasons for this is so that people who are donating any funds know that the funds that go into the reserve can only be used for that specified purpose rather than taken out and used for other uses. So it's a way to assist with fundraising towards fixing up or building a new pool.
Thank you. Council Wong?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that in the last sentence of the city manager, he may have answered my question for clarification. Certainly, first of all, I think if I was donating the word, say, pool or an upgrade, I would want to make sure that's where my money went. So it needs to have something separate to do that. That's number one. And number two, again, just to reiterate, under knelt therefore, what my understanding is, when I read this on the weekend, when I was going through the agenda, it relates to a new pool or the existing one if we choose to upgrade it. That's where the money would come from in this reserve that we're setting up. And I believe that the city manager answered that question. Thank you.
Thank you. And this means for the future of the new aquatic facility or that any monies that are earmarked for that would go into that so that there'd be, you know, kept in that as it went on too. So it's, yeah, it's a very good resolution. Anybody else have a comment?
Council Valentin?
Who?
Council Valentin?
Oh, sorry, I, yeah, Council Valentin?
Thank you, Mayor Smoak. Yeah, I'm going to be supporting this. It just makes us more transparent and it's definitely more of a structure for when we are getting donations. And right now, we're in that process as a pool committee, going around getting checks made and stuff for Winter Wonderland tickets, for instance. So it's definitely a more transparent process for the businesses and for individuals when they're giving money to know that there's an actual reserve that has been created and it's set through bylaw. And to use those funds, there would have to be a public hearing. So it's definitely the right step to go as this is really starting to take momentum. So I'll be supporting it. It's good on our chief financial officer to bring this forward that it's probably something we need to do to be more transparent as a city. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But I applaud, I applaud the direction here, something interesting in the wording here of the resolution is that it leaves open the possibility for upgrading or repairing the old, the Norfolk pool, sorry. To me, that's interesting. For once and for all, can I get an answer from either administration or this council? In terms of whether or not we've decided to go toward a new pool or still have the old one on the table? That came back before council, I believe twice now from my part and maybe more on the part of other councils. And I still, to this day, don't know whether or not this council is, or the administration's on the impression, and I would guess no from the way this is worried, worded. Whether we're, the old pool's still on the table for repair. But I'd love an answer because I've heard numbers of different things. The public has too during the last council meeting, we discussed this. So once and for all, can we please get an answer?
Your council provided the administration directions to design for a new pool facility. So those designs are currently being worked on. When those come to council, then council will have to make a decision on the tendering process. Is that an answer? That's the direction that we've been given.
Deputy Mayor?
The closest I can get to is there was a resolution passed instructing the administration to design a new pool. The dollars are correct. So that's the yes. Madam Mayor, I am a little bit confused right now with every wording here. Enter the bylaw two sixteen, twenty sixteen, twenty twenty one. Now therefore, the council of the city of Thompson in session duly assembling and negative the following that the aquatic facility reserved to be created for the purpose of capital expenditure related to the construction of the aquatic facility or significant upgrade, repair or maintenance. And so I just want to clarify with this amendment here. So is that mean this is all strictly, this, this this reserve is strictly for new aquatic center?
Yes.
So it's not for a pool, could be old, could be new, it just new?
Well, we have passed the resolution for the new pool. To me, when I read this, it is like the pool reserve is going to be moving ahead. Now, if we've got the plans for the new pool, but there's still maybe the plans for the old pool come out of this. This is all things that are to be, but right now it's for the money to go in so that we have. Now whether if money would be available, we've talked about the decommissioning of your pool or what happens to it. That is further discussion when we get to the next step.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is what my concern is. We enter something that we know, we don't even know we get the funding or not. And we keep on building this. We try to dig the hole further and further until we cannot return. I would absolutely not support it. I thought when I read this, it never said a new. So I thought this can be using for the old pool. Let's say, let's say by end of this term, we still nothing happened. So the next term, whoever run or whoever become a mayor or the council decide to say, hey, we dragging this too long. The city of Thompson been out for a swimming pool for four years. What are we doing? We still don't have any commitment from any level of government to say, hey, we're going to give you fifty, twenty million dollars to build a new pool. And yeah, I like to be optimistic. To me, my concern is like, we've been out of the pool for three years now. If you really look into to maybe retrofit the old pool, again, that study to me is ludicrous because it's not the question to ask an engineer to study. What would it take to open the pool? Not the bill and mess whistle to build it. Of course, it's going to be fourteen million to make it like not feasible anymore. Anyway, that's my opinion. So I would not support this. I like, I like to ask for a recordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Wong?
I think there's a misunderstanding in this resolution. I've been a part of putting a lot of bylaws, resolutions, you named the other of the years. And when I read it, to me, it's very clear. We want to set up a reserve fund. And it does not state, oh, our new under knelt therefore. It does not say that. So we're getting two schools of property in council. And unless it stipulates a new pool, we do have an existing pool. And if I believe, if I've heard clearly, I'm getting old, I'm turning sixty this year, so I'm getting old. I thought that the city manager was very clear. There was a resolution to do an engineering study on a new pool. What I heard was, once that comes back to council, council will then decide whether we build the pool or not. It doesn't get much more complicated to me than that. This pool is a holding place for money to be used for something. It doesn't say new or old. So I think we're debating in vain in my opinion, because I've read it and I've read it and read it. It doesn't say new. So Council Wong is right in the fact that if we don't get funding, we might want to go back and may have to go back and review our options. We're not there yet. We're not there. So therefore, the, unless we send the resolution or bylaw back for further amendment, which I suggest we should not do that, then it is what it is. It's very clear to me. It doesn't top my new role. It doesn't say that. In fact, it deals with the first piece, to me, construction of an aquatic facility tells me it's new. The second piece is significant upgrades, repairs and maintenance to aquatic facility. Well, we all understand in dire strength that we have to make the decision whether we renovate it or sell it or do something with it. That's there and it's still an option if we don't get the money that we need. That's all I'm saying. I think it's a great resolution and I will support it based on that because it doesn't say otherwise.
And I would like to note that this is the first reading of the bylaw and will be debated, you know, a second reading and that. Okay, Anthony had his first.
Yeah, just for clarity, it is for any aquatic facility. So it is not specific for an old or a new Norfolk pools and aquatic facility as well as what the administration has been directed to design as a new facility. Any of those, under the way that this is written, it's generic enough this, that the funds can be spent on that. What this prevents is that these funds cannot be turned around and spent on roads or something else like that. It has to be spent on an aquatic facility. And that's it.
Council Valentin?
Thank you, Mayor Smoak. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that this is an avenue to park the money. We have pool money already sitting in a trust fund, trust account. This just puts it into a reserve account, which makes us more transparent, which makes us have to have public hearings and pass by resolution to use it. That's all that this is. It's the first reading. Just is a proper way to do it, to be transparent to the public when we have money that's we're sitting in the trust fund, so trust account. So definitely supporting it and I think we're maybe complicating things here or confusing it with other issues. Thanks.
Okay. Council Fountain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Absolutely, I support this, especially the way it's written. It leaves both options open. I think that's not the problem. The problem is we continue to have people like Deputy Mayor and Council Valentin tell people it's a done deal in public, but it's not a done deal. We've got, just because you commissioned a study for someone to do, whether it's engineering or geotechnical or some other type of study, doesn't necessarily mean it's the will of council to move forward. Council reviews that, as Council Ellsworth has pointed out, and makes a decision at that point. We've got designs for fire halls that we never followed through on. We've got designs for a fire smart program that we never followed up on. There's a number of programs where the money, the direction from council has been to pursue the study and then act on it later. And it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going for it automatically. So I'm really, I would ask my counselors, fellow counselors, to be consistent in what they're saying. This, there's no, there's been no public decision about whether or not we're going for an old pool or a new pool yet. So just be consistent in that language because the public is listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Wong?
Madam Mayor, I asked you the question, I say, is that new? You say, yeah. But right now, after he listened, he's not. Because when I read, I think it's like for the aquatic center. I mean, okay, that's good. Later on, if it's not happened to the new, at least we can go back and use the money for the old pool to fix it up. But when I ask you clarification, is it just for new? You say, yeah. So I'm kind of like, I'm confusing.
It can be for what, like, as Jeff just pointed out, it's going to be a council decision. So if you ask me my vote, I personally would like a new pool. If the rest of you decide to fix up the old pool, that is the way we will go.
As long as we get a vote.
But my question is very, very simple and straightforward. Then I may ask, I asked you about clarification.
Well, I am sorry. You should maybe reach out to the ones that wrote it. And I am not the one that wrote the resolution. I will be part of the debate. But we all have our own feelings in it. So thank you, sir. If you want to clarify, please reach out to administration, which I think he's explained to you very well.
I'm sorry, you are the chair. I'm asking you, I direct to you. There's a law. I'll direct to you the question. You can direct to the ministry. But I asked you the question to clarify. Is it just for new? You say, yes. So I'm like, okay. So I cannot support it. But now you said could be a different thing. Now is a different story, totally different scenario. I could support this for that reason. But when you say just the new one, I'm just like, I can't do that. So anyway, so now, just once for all, so this is just a aquatic center. Right?
That's it.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The question, all those in favor? Oh, as requested by Council Wong, a reported vote. I got Council Colburn, Council McMyrtle, Council Ellsworth, Deputy Mayor, Landmark, Mayor Smoak, Council Wong, Council Fountain.
Andre?
Kathy?
Approved, Council Valentina, Carrie.
Madam Mayor, before you move on to the last section, council can add items to the agenda if it's the will of the majority of council. I'd just like to ask the administration if it's, if it pleases you. We had made some, we had some discussion regarding busing and seniors. Is this something that resolution today would speed up and prevent red tape on or extra work on administrations? Yeah.
There'd be no need for a resolution for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I will move on to the mayor's report. Activities, November thirtieth to December thirteenth. Along with administration, we met with John Spence of KTC on December the second. Attended the National Day of Remembrance and Action Against Violence Against Women on December the sixth. Along with council members and administration, we attended telephone town hall with the province of Manitoba on budget on December the seventh. On December the eighth and ninth, I attended KTC function, bringing home artwork back from art gallery in DC to survivors and residents of residential school. It was a very emotional and proud two days for our indigenous community in Thompson. And I thank them for letting me be part of it, along with Council Ellsworth and Anthony. We attended the teen challenge luncheon yesterday, December the twelfth. And Les and I attended further last evening. On December the tenth, myself and administration met with the RCMP. And last week, I don't remember this which state, Council Ellsworth and myself met with El McLaughlin and Mike Goodyear from travel Manitoba and discussed some of the issues in the north and snowmobile initiatives that they're taking on for the north for this winter. And this is our last meeting before Christmas. I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I would just like to make sure with the COVID variants and that that are going around that we please practice our hand washing, self distancing, try go to the stores when it's a bit less quiet or less busy. I mean, nine to eleven at Walmart at night, apparently my husband said is very quiet, Safeway in the evening is very quiet. So please do your shopping. Anybody that's traveling, please be aware, please watch the road condition. Take your safety kits with you so that you're dressed for the warm if you are with that. And at this point, thank you, everyone. And again, we're Danielle Adams is in our thoughts and prayers for her family as we move on. Is there anything for Christmas at my council, like, say?
I just want, and I think it's important to say, I think we spent about four hours yesterday for sure talking with a group of young people across Canada, actually just not northern Manitoba. Teen challenge, I think is a big piece that's missing for us. And one of my requests will be Mayor Smoak is that we get them off into New Year to do also they get a feel for what it's all about as well. I was very excited about it, very excited about it going forward and hopefully, not only while this city's supportive, but certainly the different local government to make that happen. I think it's really needed in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Valentina?
Thank you, Mayor Smoak. Just a reminder to the public that Winter Wonderland is open every night from six thirty to nine thirty, minimum of ten dollars at the gate or you can buy tickets at City Hall and proceeds. And this is being put on by the community pool committee. And also thank you to Dennis Foley and his crew for the parade of lights. What a fantastic things we have going on in our city for Christmas right now. So let's take advantage of them and thank you very much.
Thank you. It was really hard to decide with the parade of lights. We had McCready Winter Wonderland, we had a North Stars hockey game all going at the same time. It was really a bustling city and just a lot of people are asking, the McCready Winter Wonderland, those lights go from now till January first, every night, including Christmas, Christmas Eve, Boxing Day. Please come out and visit us. It's ten dollars a car. And many people still in your vehicle, but please come out and see us. The pool committee did an absolutely fabulous job this year of decorating the capital. I want to thank you for taking up that challenge. It's always great, you appreciate it. Thank you. Council from?
Anyway, I went and attended a meeting for this hour for the Royal Discovery Center. A very interesting meeting, to say the least. I will let the public know that they're looking at a craft sale, I believe it's this weekend, if I'm not mistaken. But I'm definitely not mistaken and they have a fifty fifty draw. And as we get out of the pandemic, that organization seems to be getting some wheels underneath it and doing more to start programming again. So I would ask the public to support that very special cause. That organization is looking towards moving to a wildlife rehabilitation model, which I think a lot of the stakeholders certainly will support. And I'd like to extend my condolences as well to the family of Danielle Adams. And wish everyone in my community happy holidays, happy safe holiday. Because I don't believe we have operation right now this year, unfortunately.
Great, thank you.
I just want very quickly to say Merry Christmas to our mayor and council and the administration and look forward to hopefully more positive in the future. And again, reiterating Jeff's comments, again, I said that start, I'll say at the end, please keep that family in your prayers. There's some closure that needs to happen and that will happen in the next few days hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you all. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Our administration and staff, thank you for all you do all year long. Everybody have a great time. Thank you. Go for a journey, Mike? Council Colburn, get to Mayor Landmark, all in favor?
Kathy?